Okay. I'll now call back to order the regular meeting of the Lake Forest Community High School Board of Education meeting for April 4th, 2017. Have a roll call vote, please? Not a vote, roll call, please.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Kryling?
Here.
Mr. Markison?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Mr. Mormon?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Can't believe it, spring break is over. Senioritis takes hold, except for Lauren and Andrew, don't let it hit you. And graduation is in two months. I've said this before, the school year really flies by when you measure it in board meetings. Next stuff is more community-related than school-related. This has been a tough election. I want to thank the board members, candidates, caucus, campaign workers, and most importantly, the voters on both sides that worked tirelessly and put themselves out there for the good of our schools and community. Dave Lane said this at the debate, "Democracy is messy." And a quote attributed to Churchill, "Democracy is the worst form of government until you consider all the others." Community service is an important aspect of our school and community. Whoever is sitting up here in whatever chair, I hope we can find a way to move forward in a collaborative and respectful manner. We can disagree, and we do, we just did across the hall, but I think we have common ground. We all want great schools. We tell our kids that they have to be strong, assertive, and life's not fair. We also teach them compassion and kindness. We must collectively focus on educating passionate, insightful, and courageous students that will make a difference in their world. That's our vision and mission. Let's do that together. On to business, more to come. Mike?
Thank you, Ms. Markison. I will hand off to Dr. Holland. It's great to see our students back.
Yes, and I will pass it off to our two students.
Okay, so after spring break, our fourth quarter's off to a good start. Our fourth annual Cool Food Pantry food drive brought in over 1,200 pounds of food. Winners were, the most food were girls softball, men's club, and two Wellness for Life classes. Prom invites have been out, and tickets are currently on sale. You're in Towns Musical opening night is Thursday, April 27th, and the musical runs through the 29th. And our math team is going to state. The team plays fourth within the regional and 10th overall within the state for their division. The competition will be at U of I on May 5th and 6th.
So, within the last two months, we've had a lot of fun emotional wellness activities during lunch periods, including balloon making, which that was a hit, so kids were walking around the commons with giraffes on their heads. Reptiles from Ella Farms came in, so everyone could hold them, pet them, I mean, I didn't, but... And there are also things like smoked vegetables and meats, just fun food to try. And also now, that the end of the year is approaching, the emotional wellness walk that always happens is in the works, we're actually meeting tomorrow to start planning it. And also, that being said, we can't thank the support staff enough for all of their hard work, and actually tomorrow is the support staff luncheon that you may know about, so we're really excited about that. And also now, I was really surprised and excited when we walked into the commons after break, there's new furniture in there against the walls. The seniors generally who sits in the commons, usually some kids would sit on the floor against the walls because there weren't enough high-top tables, but now there are a bunch of couches and little like nooks and crannies for us to sit, which is really nice. And spring sports are underway, Andrew just had a baseball game and they won, so that's exciting. And so, we're happy for warmer weather, hopefully, and sunshine. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you both. So, as mentioned, everyone is back from spring break and is business as usual. Based on feedback from students and what we've learned about our new schedule, we do have new soft seating in the commons area to help relieve some of the crowding in the library and offer additional seating options for students during the day. It has been positively received, a lot of great feedback. The latest email I received this afternoon, "Dr. Holland, my friends and I love the new couches in the commons, thank you." And that means the world to us. On Wednesday, we have assessment day. Wednesday, we are rolling out our adoption of the SAT suite, which is a core part of our student growth model. Our cafeteria will keep their usual breakfast hours. We will have lunch available from 11:00 to 2:00, and the Grind will also be open from 7:00 to 4:00. There's no regular classes held on Wednesday, students are free to leave school after the assessment, and no student activities or practices will be held in the morning of April 5th before the assessment. However, we still, we will continue to have after-school activities as normal. Testing day transportation for students will include one bus run in the morning for students to arrive at school prior to 8:15, which is our start time, and there will be two bus runs in the afternoon, one at 1:30 and one at 3:30, to make sure that all of our students who receive accommodations or have other needs after school have transportation home. And detailed bus schedules are also on the website. And thank you to all staff, students, and parents who have already taken the time to complete our exam survey. If you haven't already done so, please share your thoughts with us, we're getting a lot of valuable feedback. The survey closes on Friday. This week, we will send reminders to parents of seniors, as well as our seniors and staff, to clarify processes during the day for seniors to access off-campus privileges. It's important for us to know where all of our students are during the day and account for the time, students' time with us, whether it's outside of the building or inside of the building. And as a reminder, students have to have parental consent to leave campus. And so, we definitely plan on honoring senior privileges, which I know will be the number one question, but we also want to make sure everyone is clear on our processes to ensure that we are accountable for all of our students, our seniors who have the privileges during the day. And so, please look out for additional communication about that this week. Andrew mentioned our school musical. The last thing, actually two things I'll mention, our environmental club is planning week-long festivities the week of April 17th in honor of Earth Day. They plan to host week-long events for students and staff. The week kicks off with Meatless Monday, which of course I'm a fan of, where we're partnering with food services to increase meatless food options in the cafeteria and the Grind. There's still, there'll be meat, but just additional meatless options. We're also looking at some vegan options in the Grind for that day as well. Although the week should be fun, it will also be filled with opportunities for both students and staff to learn more about the importance of taking care of our environment. On Friday, we will host a new class of Alumni Wall of Fame honorees and their families. All of our seniors will participate in an assembly to honor the recipients. It is truly a special day and a true reminder of the impact that students have, not only amongst the school community, but also across the larger global community, and it's truly a special day. Last year was my first time participating, and it was one of the highlights of the year. Lastly, I know this is a big night for the school community, and a lot has gone into the election by all candidates. I wanted to take a moment just to thank our current Board of Ed members for supporting the work of the high school, as well as my growth as a leader. I have had the pleasure of getting to work with all of you, and even during times when we've had very difficult conversations, I appreciate the fact that you've pushed our leadership team to be better for the people we serve in the community. The times that you've pushed, challenged, and questioned, as well as encouraged us, has definitely led to positive growth, and at the end of the day, growth matters, so thank you.
And superintendent's report is relatively brief. There is something I'd like to encourage everybody to attend as they are able. This week is the Wall of Fame, and that takes place at, on Friday, at 9:30.
We'll send you a reminder, but you're invited to the reception, so we'll send the times and all on that. And I don't know if, Mike, at this point, we can't reveal the recipients, but they are very exciting, and if you have time Friday, I think you'd really enjoy the presentation.
It's not, is it Ted? Just, I'm just curious.
Keeping that top secret, so you'll have to wait till Friday.
Yeah, he just has a shot at it next year. If you have not attended the Wall of Fame, every year, I am reminded what an unbelievable community that we get to live in, communities that we get to live in, that produces such remarkable kids. What's fun, in part, about the Wall of Fame is that all of our senior class is in there, and the kids are invited back, but this time, they're being honored, and so, two or three each year. And you see their parents and their siblings in the front rows, and every single year they talk about this event in a similar way, that is, "I cannot believe that I'm up here." And then they tell some amazing story about funny stuff they did in school, funny stuff they did over the course of their lifetime, and incredibly relatable to students and adults alike. And this year will be no different than every other year. If you miss it, you'll miss one of the best things that our school can do each year, and it's a huge, huge amount of work from a group, a large group of adults, one of whom is in the audience here with us, and her son is over here next to Dr. Holland, works tirelessly on this event. So, one of the best events that we can have, celebrating the adult children that we have only one time a year. The other thing, almost as exciting as the Wall of Fame, is the Illinois State Board of Education release of its ESSA accountability measure. Now, doesn't that just warm your heart? So, the Illinois State Board sent out a release today talking about the accountability measures that are part of ESSA, ESSA as it is called, which is the reauthorization of what most everybody knows is No Child Left Behind. That was 1965, it was the beginning of the federal involvement in schools, and in this reauthorization changed some of the accountability measures for schools. What is interesting about Illinois' recent release is yet to be clearly defined. They have four tiers that they're proposing. Exemplary is the highest, and then the lowest tier is called the lowest performing school. But there's a critical thing that we're going to be watching to see how they define this, is that in order to be an exemplary school, which Lake Forest High School absolutely would be in virtually every way, there must be no underperforming subgroups. And if you were around during the time of No Child Left Behind, you'll know that every school in the state wound up failing because of one or one of the other subgroups. Lake Forest High School has one subgroup that will be a challenge, and that is, we have a sizable special ed population. And how that is underperforming is then defined will be very important for us. The other thing that we'll be, that we'll be watching with some interest is that schools will be graded using an A to F scale. This also is reminiscent of No Child Left Behind, and will be something that we'll be interested in seeing how they wind up defining that. They're also going to be using 50% of a school's grade will be part of the standardized assessment, so how students do on standardized assessments and whether they show growth on that. And that was one of the things that the, I believe the governor insisted on using, that 55%, as opposed to some other mixture of academic indicators and school quality and student success indicators. So, that is the news of the day. Thank you, Ms. Markison.
Okay, are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? None, okay. We have no reports today. I don't believe our committees have met last month, and Dr. Elliott is not here to talk about the Ed Committee. John, is there anything to talk about related to finance?
Nope. Next finance and ops meeting is April 12th at 7:30 a.m. here at West Campus.
Thank you. Liaison reports, Ed Redd?
Nothing, nothing to report.
Nothing to report? Ted, anything to report on NSSCD?
Just real briefly, we haven't met since our last meeting. Next meeting's tomorrow night, everyone's invited, Allen Park, 7 o'clock. But I do want to pass on a note, Suzanne Sands, District 67, board member, has been nominated to be the chairman of the Board of NSSCD.
Great. Good, thank you. We now move on to action items. First item is the approval of a voluntary separation program. Jen, is there anything you'd like to say about that, describe?
I do, thank you. Just a brief update and information to the board, this is similar to the program we offered five years ago, as some of you or all of you are aware, we do not have a former board policy that has retirement, I'm hitting the button, so quickly, am I good? At least it may be recording. We do not have formal retirement policies in place for non-certified staff offering them any particular benefits, so we, what this program does is open up a window of 45 days for non-certified staff who are eligible to receive some retirement incentives, some post-retirement payments towards their health insurance, if they were to elect to retire prior to July 31st of this year. I think it's a great opportunity for the board to show some loyalty to some staff members who have done a significant amount of loyalty and great work for the district for a great many of years.
Entertain a motion, and then a second, and then ask for questions, and then we'll vote. Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the voluntary separation program?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the voluntary separation program.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is the approval of Verizon, Verizon cell tower lease at East Campus. Jen, want to say anything about that?
Just very quickly, this would just be an additional cell tower lease, as you are aware, we do already currently have a few in place, and this is swapping out to a new provider. What is in the board packet is a draft agreement, we're down to about four different provisions that are left that we're working out between our legal and their legal. I'm confident that we'll take care of that in the next week or so, and then be able to execute based on the parameters that were in the board memo.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the cell tower lease?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the Verizon cell tower lease.
Second?
Second.
Any questions?
I have, just one, Jen, what's the increased revenue that we expect to get off of this lease compared to what we've done in the past?
This is similar, we receive a little bit less from one of our current providers and a little bit more from the other. This also has a 3% annual increase. The difference that we're actually receiving with this particular contract is the $5,000 one-time signing bonus. That's new to this agreement in particular, so this is $3,500 a month, which is considerable income, alternative revenue to the district.
So, net-net, am I hearing you say it's kind of a wash, or because of the signing bonus?
We were losing one of our cell towers anyway, so we would have been losing that revenue, and thankfully, we were able to find some money to replace it at a very similar amount, if not a little bit higher.
Got it, thanks. Jen, I didn't forget that we talked about this, I just want to get it on the record. There were a couple of questions circulated, and those are part of the legal review, and you're confident that those will be addressed appropriately before we sign?
Yes, there was some questions, there's concerns that were raised and distributed to me, I've shared those with our legal counsel, they were already some of the provisions that we're currently working on, so I'm comfortable that we'll square that away.
Okay, good. May I have a roll call vote, please? Oh wait, is there any other thoughts, questions? Okay, roll call vote?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is the approval of a textbook purchase. The textbooks have been on display with a summary out near Mr. Simick's office for a month. Hope you've all had a chance to take a look at it. Is there anything, anybody needs to say about, anybody from staff about the textbooks? It's all pretty self-explanatory, I think, the descriptions. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the textbook purchase?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the textbook purchase in the amount of $92,700 per policy to colon 20.
Second.
Any questions, any discussion? Okay.
I have a question. We got an email response, but can you just take us through again? This will have an online component to it, is that right? Can you tell me, the textbooks that we're purchasing, there will be inability for the students to access the material online, is that right?
With all of our vendors, it's a priority of ours, especially we're a one-to-one school, as a one-to-one school, to ensure that if we go into an agreement to purchase textbooks, that there's an online version of the textbook. We're able to decrease the cost of textbooks by only providing class sets of them as well, which is something we're looking at across the building. So, every classroom will have a class set, but students can still, will still have access to the textbook because all of our students have Chromebooks. Additionally, we're, as a way of evaluating all of our instructional materials in regards to textbooks, we are, will be proposing a four-year adoption model, so we have textbooks that are aligned with the learning targets and learning outcomes that we expect, as well as they're updated in terms of their online resources.
That's awesome, thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to add, a couple of years ago, those of you watching at home, and those that are familiar with this, we made a change with textbooks from charging our students to buy them to then rent them. So, this is part of the ongoing program to make sure that we've got the latest and greatest available for our kids, both online and physically. And it was also, it's important to note that we, you know, it was the one area where the board didn't use taxpayer dollars to help subsidize the cost of those books, and we made that change a couple of years ago, too. So, this is an ongoing program, again, making sure that we've got the right materials in the hands of the right kids, walking into the right classrooms, so they're prepared, so.
Roll call, please?
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next few action items relate to some board policies that we've discussed at the policy committee level, related to reimbursement of certain expenses for board members. I think it was worth the review by the policy committee. Is there anything, anybody wants to say about these in presenting these policies? We've all read them, we're good? Okay. First is approval of policy 2:125 related to board member compensation expenses. May I have a motion to approve?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the first reading of policy 2:125, board member compensation expenses.
Second.
Wait, any questions? Any discussion?
Just one point of clarification, I mean, board members are not paid, so where we say compensation, those people at home, again, this is reimbursement for potential business or board-related expenses, the way this reads could be a little confusing, so just wanted to point that out.
As long as you're pointing that out, there actually is a provision for the board secretary to be paid, but I'm not asking for anything at this time.
Soon as you make the Wall of Fame, we'll consider that. We got pizza, we got pizza today, we got fed. We got fed, that's good enough. Okay, may I have a motion to approve?
I read.
Oh, you already did, I'm sorry. We had a second?
Do it again.
I don't want to do it again. And we had a second. Yeah, we already did all that. Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is approval of policy 5:60 related to expenses, first reading. May I have a motion?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the first reading of policy 5:60 expenses.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Two seconds, second and a third. Any thoughts or questions, discussion? No questions, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is approval of policy 8:32 related to meeting protocols. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the first reading of policy 8:32, meetings protocols.
A second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next two items relate to reduction in staff, so may I have a legal requirement that the board must follow related to the notification for reduction in staff? So, may I, may I have a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing honorable reduction in probationary teachers?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education adopt the resolution authorizing honorable reduction in probationary teachers assignment.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is adoption of a resolution authorizing the honorable dismissal of part-time, non-tenured teachers. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education adopt the resolution authorizing honorable dismissal of part-time, non-tenured teachers.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is approval of our human resources report. Anything to present related to the human resources report that we don't, okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the HR report?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the human resources report as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next are the items on our consent, consent agenda, consent agenda. I'll remind everybody that any item can be removed from the consent agenda at the request of a board member. So, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for February 2017, approval of renewal of IHSA membership, acknowledgement of a consign gift of camera equipment, approval of release of executive session minutes from September 2016 and through February 2017, minutes of a regular meeting and workshop, March 13th, 2017, minutes of an executive session also on March 13th, 2017, and disposal of audio recordings from May 4th, 12th, 26th, 2015. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion on any of the items? None? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?[1792.87] Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Markson?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have three FOIA requests. One from Nancy Thorne, resident, status is complete. One from Leanne Rivas, a commercial request, that status is also complete. One from Julianne Tolano, a commercial request, that status is also complete. A few announcements, tomorrow, Wednesday, April 5, SAT testing for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, no school for seniors. Awesome. Friday, April 7, is the Wall of Fame induction. Friday, April 14, is the Day of Non-Attendants. Monday, May 1, is our old board, new board meeting, where we'll be honoring outgoing board member or members, and welcoming the new board member or members. And Monday, May 8, is our next official regular board meeting, right here in the same room at 7:00 p.m. So, may I have a motion to adjourn the Lake Forest Community High School board meeting?
So, moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.